All right. You ready? We're going to call the main order. It is 6:32, December 6, 2018. We'll start off with a roll call. Keith McGurgen here. Shane Wells not here yet.
He's repping.
He's repping. I'll show up later. Okay. Amy Hanneman.
Here.
Brian Winslow.
Here.
Dave Ruth.
Yeah.
And let's go around and everybody who isn't on the board introduce themselves and say your role, please.
Ginger Doyle, secretary.
Scott Runing, superintendent.
Nate Byrne, director of student services.
Jocelyn Young, principal.
Adrian Alford, assistant principal.
Thank you. We'll start off with the pledge of allegiance. I believe we have a student representative to lead us today.
Colton McNaul.
Colton McNaul.
I met Colton yesterday.
Are you?
Yeah.
Are we all ready? You can start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Give a pin.
Do you want to... So our bills and manifests are going around. We do have a student representative. Did you want to introduce him today?
This young man is Colton McNaul. He's in first grade with Ms. Hathaway's class. The reason why we had Colton today is because he is a true leader of his classmates. He's always persevering. He's working hard, obviously very well dressed 95% of the time. He's just a really positive student to have, so that's why he's a great fit to do the place today.
All right. Thank you for bringing him in. Colton, do you have any... Do you have anything you want to talk to us about today? No? Do you have any questions for him or anything?
Hi, Colton. I remember you from Center School.
You got big.
Yo, Colton, last year actually showed his whole class how to tie a tie. I was there with him and he taught me again, too.
I was going to say, you'd have to teach me, too. I have no idea.
He was good at it. He was really great, because remember, you had the pieces of cloth, right? And you showed everybody how to do it. It was really impressive. You did a nice job there, too.
Colton, keep up the good work, please. Thank you.
If I might add, the other day... I was in here two days ago, or two days?
Yes, yes.
And I have to say, for a first grader to come up to me and introduce himself and tell me that I knew his father was impressive for a young man who barely knew me. And then I think he was equally surprised when I said, "I know your mom, too." Thank you very much for coming.
Colton was very excited to come tonight. Every time I saw him today, he said, "I'll see you later."
It's nice to see you.
Oh, you know what? I forgot one.
I'll go grab it. I'm going to snag it.
Okay. Sorry, Colton. We have a pin for you, and I forgot to bring it with me.
So, Colton, what do you like best about Northwood School?
Um, gym.
Gym?
Usually either gym, recess, or lunch, so...
Yeah. That was a good one.
All right. We'll just...
What's your favorite activity in gym? Are there games?
Um... Hot dog tag.
Hot dog tag.
You have to explain that to me. What's hot dog tag?
What's hot dog tag?
Um, so you like use noodles and, um...
You were just playing this this week, weren't you?
No. It's a different game.
Not at all.
Pool noodles?
Is that where you...
Yeah, so you use a noodle and, um, whenever someone tags you, you have to put your hands up like this and say, "I need buns. I need bun."
So someone has to get you. Do they have to hit you on both sides to make the buns, or just one?
Yeah, like two people have to wrap around someone and unfreeze them.
Cool.
Very cool.
All right. Well, thank you.
Tough game.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. We appreciate it. And you've got to stick around for a minute.
Here we go.
I can. You're probably shaking. Do you like to burn your vest or iron your shirt?
Um, this, please.
See if I can have the motor skills. This side or this side?
Um, that side, please.
Okay, now you are even snazzier.
All right.
Are we good?
Yeah, I think we're... Thanks a lot for bringing that up.
You can stay till 10 with us if you want.
All right. Do we have any need to adjust the agenda tonight?
Mr. Elephant.
Do you have a non-public session scheduled? Does this have to happen? Should we just do that later?
Well, no, because that affects your...
Our budget.
Your warrant.
Our warrant, that's right. So, do you do this?
Yeah. But I anticipate we can move through a non-public session.
Okay. So it looks like we are going to need a non-public session, so we'll need a motion to go under our RSA 91-A colon 32.
I'm going to make that motion.
Second?
Legal opinion.
Legal opinion is on the end. Confirmed.
L.
Yep. K and L.
Mr. Runing, are we going?
No, you can... Yeah, that's fine. You're fine. You've been peripherally involved.
All right, so we had a motion.
Yeah.
Is there a second? Okay, we'll roll call in. Keith McGurgen, yes. Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneman?
Yes.
And Mr. Winslow?
Yes.
All right, we are in non-public then. We are going to move on to our opening public comment. Is there any public that would like to comment? On what? I guess I just assumed we were doing that somewhere else, but...
I'm doing it under.
All right, let's do it under. Okay.
Just a little bit.
All right, let's not forget. All right, no one... Good. Any board member like to take this opportunity to address the board?
Not to address the board, but on the agenda, I would like to, on the new business, bring up just one little thing, so when we get there, I'll bring it. It's very small.
All right. All right, we'll close the opening public comment session and move on to our consent agenda. I believe we have a number of packets in our... I mean, a number of sets of minutes in our packet. We're going to page four. Excuse me.
Yeah. I think John Ford wants to make a motion to approve the minutes of 10-18-18, public and non-public.
Do you want to make a motion just to approve the entire consent agenda?
Or you want to approve all of them, and that's fine if we approve everything.
Okay. So there will be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second?
Second. Any discussion on this?
I don't think I did. I don't believe I had any questions on it.
All right. And all in favor of approving the consent agenda?
All right.
Mr. Wells, say yes. Yes, thank you. Motion carries five zero. Student services report.
So on page 17, you'll see my report that highlighted some of what went on this month and the changes in numbers. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
It's a symposium. Is that like a big musical? The orchestra was there, or is that...
It's a...
That's a symphony. Can't say the word.
That's okay. It's a fancy word for like conferences to get together and really communicate what's going on with the trends.
So with our reduction in placements, is that reflected in our budget proposal?
Reduction...
This is a reduction of two special students.
That's just in your normal Northwood, so there's no reduction there that you'll see with inside your budget, because that's just your typical school enrollment. They're not out-of-district placements.
Okay.
Also, I know, I mean, maybe when we talk about budget, but in our line for homeless transportation, and actually that we have an increase in homeless students, are we... Is there proposed budget?
So all homeless students do not require transportation. It just depends on where they're currently residing. So if you have a homeless student that's residing in Northwood, they would just take the bus like any other student, so there's not an additional cost. So what I did was I looked at what the trend is, and I factored that into where we're at. So at this point, your transportation lines are appropriate for the budget.
Cool, thank you.
That's all I had.
That's all I have.
Do we have any additional questions? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Move on to our principal's report. Ms. Young?
Good evening. Our report is on page 18. We took the opportunity this time to really highlight some of the fantastic things that go on in our school every day. They are fairly self-explanatory, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I mean, I should go to a couple of these things, the museum and stuff. They were really good. And I did listen to the podcast. Is that going to happen more, too?
Yeah, weekly.
Weekly?
Yep.
Has it been happening weekly?
Yep. So I've been meeting with... Wow, that's really loud. With Mr. Robert, and I now have an archive, so you can go back in there, or he helped me do that, so you can click on any of the past ones. So there should be another one tomorrow that will be uploaded to.
All right. Anything else? Do you have any questions for our principal? We're moving right along, then. Because she's not here.
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to skip over the curriculum director's report at this point and move on to policies. First policy in our packet is GBK staff concerns and complaints. He says... Are we reaffirming it? This is the first we've seen. We didn't have this at our last meeting, right?
I'd like to make a motion to reaffirm policy GBK staff concerns and complaints.
Okay. All right. Do we have a second? Is there any discussion on this? Looks pretty straightforward. There's no changes on this anyway, right?
It was current.
Do we... I mean, is there a best practice for when things should be reaffirmed? I mean, I know this was unchanged since 1989.
I believe that the... I think the best practice should be... Reaffirmations, to me, are an educational process for the board. So to me, best practice, and we try to do this, but sometimes you get time crunch, is reaffirm policies as they come up in the cycle, and especially when the board has new members on it, because it gives them the opportunity to look at a policy that's in place that might just be a policy manual or online, and they might be able to look at it. That's the best practice. That's what we strive for.
Yeah, that's why I like having all the B policies in the beginning of the year and stuff, yeah.
Except one of the issues that I notice over time in different districts is your A section is like 100, your B section's 100, your C section's 100, and then your D's a B, because you never...
You can't get to them.
Yeah, so I would like to take some time, some time, and think about maybe reversing it one year.
All right. Any other discussion on this one? All in favor of reaffirming policy GBK?
Right.
Opposition? Nope. Okay, policy is reaffirmed, five zero. We have a first reading of a number of policies. EHA, data governance and security, JEC, manifest educational hardship, and KF, use of school facilities. Up to you guys, how you want to handle these one at a time, or...
I'd like to move the three policies, EHAB, JEC, and KF, from my first reading to second reading.
Second?
Thanks. Anybody have... First off, does the policy committee want to go over any of this stuff, or just...
This is an extremely complicated policy that I'm actually going through and doing some cross-outs on right now. I went to a workshop on this policy on HB 1612, which is the data governance and security RSA that was put into place.
This year, right?
And I will tell you that when I used to go to special education law conferences, I would always have a certain level of anxiety about learning about laws and issues that people had. I think my anxiety in this workshop was piqued. The amount of work it's going to take to put this policy into place, which is required, is probably more important than the policy adoption itself. We've already begun to have the tech directors get together monthly and meet on how they're going to do this, gathering outside resources to inventory software and websites and privacy agreements, and this is going to be a tremendous amount of work that, you know, we'll get the plan in place, but then the implementation of the plan is going to be a three-to-five-year process. The issue that comes up is that the private sector, hospitals, healthcare businesses, are far ahead of the public sector in data security and protecting student information and protecting identifiable staff information. I'll give you an example of the amount of phishing emails that we get on the SAU. Mr. Stanley communicates those out, caution staff not to click the links. It's usually a survey gizmo link that will start the process. I think I've been over with the SAU board, the bot attacks that we were having earlier in the year. So this is important work. It could be some cost down the road to the district, but it's interesting what different people are doing. A school district in the state is operating to their vetting tools, and we're thinking about... We're exploring consortiums to join and reduce costs to help implement the policy and the law, but your folks, your tech folks across the SAU are already working on how to address these requirements and create a secure virtual environment for your students and staff.
So I'd just want to point out, this is a policy that's required by law.
Absolutely. And it's actually... Isn't it supposed to be mandated by June of... July 2018? We have to have the plan.
It's June 30.
Yeah, you have to have the plan. We have to have the plan done by June 30.
Okay. Any other questions on this one?
We said you made some cross-outs and stuff. Should we hold off, or do you think it's still...
Yeah, I got them, like the director of technology.
We're going to... This will be moved to second reading, and we can look at the changes.
Address more there.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's only because I was leaning back, because she...
Yeah.
Relaxing over here.
We mentioned some of these, three, two-second readings.
Do move it to second reading.
Okay, policy JEC, test educational hardship.
JCA?
J...
It says JEC.
Oh, no, it's related to, sorry. I'm just missing.
I read through this. I didn't see major changes. It seems mostly wording.
It defines... It was a policy... It was a policy that wasn't... There was some confusion at the state level, surprise, about JCA and its implementation, and then accompanying technical advisory from the Department of Ed that tried to clarify that, and now they've adjusted it back. So basically, JCA ties in... JEC ties into JCA, which is your change of school assignment policy. So your change of school assignment policy allows the superintendent to change the student's assignment based on the best interest of the student, right? And so me, as your executive officer, can make that decision and then bring it to you for approval, right? If I deny the decision for a change of school assignment, it stops there. The accompanying sister policy, sort of a check and balance, is JEC, which is manifest educational hardship. That's a letter to me that I need to bring to the board for approval. If the board approves or denies it, there's an appeal to the Department of Education.
I think the letter...
And there's a difference in...
They have a hearing at the board first.
Yeah, they have a hearing. Yep, yep. So it's a little different process. They're balanced process in that it preserves your role and my role, and they play off of one another. That doesn't mean a parent who applies under JCA and gets denied can't apply under JEC. They certainly can do that.
It's kind of like if they're not happy with what happened with JCA.
Right.
They can use JEC to bring it to the board and look for an override or whatever.
Yep.
Do I have any questions about this one? All right, move on to the policy KF, discussion on that. This is the use of school facilities.
Most of the changes here are just extending the scope. Well, there was the... There was... Right, so we had debate, conversation, and decided to use organization group entity, which allows personal...
Right.
An entity is a person.
Yep.
That would be about it.
So in the one instance of this we had that personal use did not have the required insurance that's filled out by this, I'm going to grant that with the exception. I suspect that's going to be very likely for a lot of personal use situations. I'm wondering if we should have something in the policies saying... And maybe it's here, and maybe I missed it, but saying that, you know, the procedure being that we would...
Must provide the school district with individual health, harmless, and demidication certificates from each participant. The requesting organization will be fiscally responsible for any damage to the facility.
What is that?
Page 33.
The school board can override the insurance.
There.
Okay. That's what I was looking for.
That gives you the ability to do that.
Thank you. Thanks for pointing that out. Okay. Any discussion on this? There's a form in here for what the request for facilities looks like. Okay, so we had a motion to move all three of these policies to second reading to go for a discussion. Let's take a vote. All in favor of moving them to second reading now? Motion carries five zero. Okay. Lastly, we have a policy at second reading now, policy IHAK, character and citizenship education. If it's the board's pleasure, we can adopt that policy tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt policy IHAK, character and citizenship education.
Second. Any discussion or questions on this one? Looks like it didn't... For this one, wording changes again? I mean...
Yeah, you got strikethes and bolts and legal reference dates.
Yeah. It's reasonable to me. All right. All in favor of adopting policy IAHK? Policy's adopted, five zero. All right, policies. Thank you, folks. On to the superintendent's report. Mr. Runing?
I do need to add a letter that I've distributed to the staff to the end of my report. I have copies for you.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I do have a personnel report. It came in yesterday. I'll read this to you from Mr. Boudreaux. In due regards to inform you that due to other obligations, I will no longer be able to carry out my duties as a truancy officer. I will, however, remain on until January 1, 2019, in the hopes that you may be able to find a replacement. I have enjoyed filling this role and will miss working with you. I just feel that my new role as road agent, I will not have the time to carry out the duties, and this won't be fair to your office. I will help in the effort to find a replacement any way I can.
Denied. So this is a staff member, so we have to accept his resignation.
Yeah.
So I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of our truant officer. Mr. Boudreaux, with regret.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
The next thing is on page 45. That's your official letter from the state saying they approved your $100,000. It does say the award must be claimed by April 1, but I can also, as soon as you approve you, if you decide to move forward with certain things, I can get in touch with Amy Clark at the DOE and file an extension. So I'm sort of just giving you that for information and waiting for you to take further action, and then I'll follow through on that.
I should ask you a question on that. The award reflects 80% of the project costs.
That's an error in their letter. I submitted for 600 and something thousand. They capped it at 100,000. So they went... The first round of releases, they had a cap, and then nobody applied, and so they removed the cap, and then people applied. In the second round, they applied the cap, and so we were just in that round where they applied the cap.
And their 80% is that they will only pay up to 80% of a project, right?
Right, well, in this, they've capped you, so they're only going to pay 100,000.
In our case, that's...
80% or 100,000, whichever's less, right?
Okay.
So... If there's any changes to those rules, I'll be certain to file.
And your experience filing for extensions is routine, generally okay to do?
I can tell you that on Strappard's behalf, I filed for a modification, and it was approved. I believe that the commissioner finds this work, and the commission in general finds this work very valuable and important in the state. I don't see... In talking with the architect, who has experience with all of this, he didn't feel that there was much concern in filing for an extension. There is a mechanism to do that, so...
What are the mechanics of this, as far as what needs to be done by April 1? The money has to be spent by April 1?
No, because I would file for an extension.
If you didn't file an extension, or if it's denied or whatever...
Yeah, I would have to have. So if you would have to have your portion of the work done, and then you would spend it out of your budget, and then file for reimbursement, and you get that money.
So the reimbursement would have to be filed by April 1?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, so the work went after that. We're about to at least pay something.
Yeah, but I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Why? Because you think the extension will be granted?
Right. Right. Because I'm going to modify the application, to say the costs were so high and we were capped, that we've considered different funding sources, one which requires potentially a vote, and...
Okay.
This is the 100,000 you were discussing at the last meeting?
Yes.
Just so I can put it in.
Yep.
So I know I'm talking about... Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Budget?
Let's do something easy first, and then we can go over budget and warrants and another vote you need to take. So as you know, one of your sister districts... One of your sister districts sends some of its high school students to Dover, and I'm sure everybody's aware that Dover had a significant issue last week. And because of the close relationship between me and the superintendent, because of the fact that students are sent there, it really gave me the opportunity to write a letter to the staff, not about the incident specifically, but about the dynamic. And what I've learned is a couple of different things. One is that we live in a state that's becoming increasingly diverse, and because we're experiencing that, sometimes we don't...
and so they removed the cap, and then people applied. And then the second round, they applied the cap, and so, we were just in that round where they applied the cap.
And their eighty percent is that they will only pay up to eighty percent of a project, right?
Right, well, in this, they've capped you, so they're only going to pay a hundred thousand.
Eighty percent or a hundred thousand, whichever's less, right?
Okay.
If there's any changes to those rules, I'll be certain to file.
And your experience filing for extensions is routine generally okay?
I can tell you that on Stratford's behalf, I filed for a modification, and it was approved. I believe that the commissioner finds this work, and the commission in general finds this work very valuable and important in the state. I don't see, in talking with the architect, who has experience with all of this, he didn't feel that there was much concern in filing for an extension. There is a mechanism to do that, so...
What are the mechanics of this, as far as what needs to be done by April first? The money has to be spent by April first?
No, because I would file for an extension.
No, if you didn't file an extension, or if you didn't deny it or whatever...
Yeah, I would have to have, so if, you would have to have your portion of the work done, and then you would spend it out of your budget, and then file for reimbursement, and you're going to get that money.
So, the reimbursement would have to be filed by April first?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, so the work went after that, we're about to at least pay something.
Yeah, but I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Why? Because you think the extension will be granted?
Right. Because I'm going to modify the, I'm going to modify the application to say the costs were so high and we were capped that we've considered different funding sources, one which requires potentially a vote, and...
This is the hundred thousand you were discussing at the last meeting?
Yes.
Just so I can put it in.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
Let's do something easy first, and then we can go over budget and warrants and another vote you need to take. So, as you know, one of your sister districts, one of your sister districts sends some of its high school students to Dover, and I'm sure everybody's aware that Dover had significant issue last week. And because of the close relationship between me and the superintendent, because of the fact that students are sent there, it really gave me the opportunity to write a letter to the staff, not about the incident specifically, but about the dynamic. And what I've learned is a couple of different things. One is that we live in a state that's becoming increasingly diverse, and because we're experiencing that, sometimes we don't have the level of cultural competence that we need to make good decisions day to day and not be offensive. And then the other thing that I noticed is, we've really shifted to more of a student choice and student voice model, where kids can demonstrate their learning through projects, skits, visual arts, and different, different things. And I think that one of the ramifications of that, I think it's great for kids, is that we need to sort of vet our activities to make sure that they're being safe, respectful, and responsible, right? And it's a shift, if we're going to shift our instructional practices to better meet the needs of children, then we just need to be aware of that. So, I wrote a letter to all three schools, and I'd like to give that letter to you, just to show you what I've communicated to your staff.
All right, you guys ready to move on?
Mm-hmm.
So, why don't you go ahead and...
You actually need to vote on your tentative agreement. I'll take that.
Trying to find what I do with it. Here. Thank you. So, the negotiating team, the professional union, did come up with a tentative agreement, and the board, it's up to the board to ratify that agreement if we so choose. So, I'd like to make a motion now that we ratify the tentative agreement, the changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the Northwood ESP Association and Northwood School Board. As presented to you in the packet. Is there any discussion on this?
And agree to this as to the changes, and then after, are we going to ratify the contract?
I think we have to...
We do both, right?
Once you approve the TAs, you're ratifying the contract, so you can put that into your motion.
Okay. So, this will be for both TAs and the contract?
Right, and then what I'll do is bring a contract back to you prior to deliberative session to include in your packet. I just want to have time to vet it.
And so, if there's any changes, we'll have to go through and re...
Yeah, the changes are mostly done, and the contract's aligned. Then, once the voters vote on it, if it's approved, then we go for signatures with some of the people in the room.
Do we sign, we don't sign the contract before the vote?
I can check on that.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Seems like you'd have to leave, right?
At least you would have to sign it.
I can check with them.
Yeah, I'm just curious. We'll figure it out, I'm sure.
Can you get that, Nate? I got to check with Jordan. Thank you. I got two duly notes that we can compare.
All right, if there's no discussion, all in favor of ratifying the tentative agreement for the contract? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you.
Next.
Can't leave that there.
Do you have the binders, Nate? You've distributed all the binders. All right. So, as you know, I'm trying to tweak things as we go, so that makes me feel a little guilty at the amount of paper that I use, but it also helps us keep track of everything. So, what I'd like everybody to do is open your binder to your operating budget section.
Rip it up.
You don't know?
Is this same folder?
No. I would not rip it up. I would put like an X on the first page, so you know you're going to get it out.
So, what's in our packet is older than what's in here?
Correct.
So, okay, so we should go with this?
So, I buy your book, so you can mark an X on that one, and then you can put this one over it.
Or we could just re-rerere it. This is the proposed budget, you're saying?
Proposed budget.
Keith, you're going to be on Saturday, right?
I'll be on Saturday.
I don't really want my own binder. I hope I find yours in my life, but I'll take it.
I'm going to have to do this on Saturday, I'm going to have to do this on Saturday too, so you're giving me a dry run. So, now, close your rings, flip to your default section.
Can we, there's no need for the old one, though, right?
There, you can take it out. I keep them because...
Help a legal eagle, sir.
Thank you.
Not a copy. That's good, though.
Find page, whatever.
Sorry.
Didn't set the alarm zone.
We're good. Don't do that, you're off duty.
Trees we killed.
I don't rap back when I'm not.
Mr. Ruth, I'll try to scale down in the future. It's a little like having your first child do it.
Wasn't as complicated as this. I didn't have any problems.
Right.
I think I was playing softball that time.
So, you've seen these budgets before. There's not much different. Your previous budget... So, the big thing is that your current SAU number, let me explain what happened. So, when I'm checking the SAU revenue section, I notice that the financial system was treating things as like a profit-based model. So, for instance, in your SAU, fifteen thousand dollars for indirect costs, a thousand dollars for some Title II administration for COBRAUN, right? So, the system is treating that as sort of profit, right? So, you had your allocations, and then that was profit. Really, what needs to happen to that? That money needs to be divided back into your allocations and reduce your allocations, so it's a zero. Same in the preschool with tuition. So, we made those adjustments in the preschool budgets, which fluctuated your numbers a little bit. And then...
So, is any of our allocations, the cost will probably be high then for that, for these costs?
No, I think your previous business administrator made those adjustments, and your new business administrator, as a process of learning, needed to make those adjustments. The other issue that I discovered today, when I was looking through position spreadsheets, like detail, is that in most cases, ADS, in previous districts, you can pull a position spreadsheet, you can set some assumptions, and you can import it back, and it'll move people up a step and take care of it automatically. The way ADS was commissioned in our district, it's like do it manually, so there's an increased chance for errors. So, I did find one staff member that was on the same step next year as last year, so we made that adjustment. That caused a minor up and down in your budget. So, your budget largely is the same. I think we should, we should go through it. Do you have the last one? The last?
Yeah, I marked them.
Yeah, the marked up one.
So, you have, even though the preschool and the SAU budget numbers have not been finalized, they're the latest?
They're the latest and the greatest. And I know that gets confusing, but I want to keep track and be accurate and go through things as they come and make those changes, so we don't lose track of them. So, the budget that you got last week had a bottom line of a savings of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-five, thirty-seven, and the one I just passed out tonight... The one I passed out tonight has a bottom line of a reduction of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars, so you're moving in the right direction. And that's really the big change from what we've discussed. That's really the little change of what we've discussed in the past. Now, we know your budget's going to the Budget Committee on Saturday, and I will walk through. Thank you for allowing me to practice on how to do our binders together, because I'm going to try to do that with them too, so we can keep ourselves in order. So, I get to teach once in a while. That would be one of those days.
I would recommend taking, having them take this out, because otherwise you flip through and you're on page four, now someone else is on page four.
We can, but here's the issue with the Budget Committee, is that, is that they've taken notes on what they have.
Oh.
And I want them to have those notes. And so, what I will do is just quickly do what I just did with you, and actually, Mr. O'Sullivan tomorrow is going to make me a sheet to pass out that says, here are the changes, so you don't have to keep track of it.
And I'll note the town did exactly the same thing, other than they read off changes as we approached them. They didn't, you know, because there was a few things that had adjusted.
We'll just have it, Mr. Byrne tomorrow will make sure that there's a sheet ready for the Budget Committee that just outlines those three things to them, so they don't have to be confused, and I'll honor, acknowledge the difficulty of doing this. I mean, in Stratford the other night, I was working with three budgets at the same time, flipping pages, and so, I certainly respect the confusion that these changes create, but we also need to be accurate, so... There'll be some other updated documents that I prepared, sitting on my chair, ready to go for the Budget Committee. I've already emailed them to the Chair and the Vice Chair, so they have them. So, we're going to have like five or six things to update for them. So, for tonight, you can certainly go through section by section and sort of vote, section by section. You can't really vote on the bottom line, and you can't vote on the special education section, because that contains the unconfirmed preschool number that needs to be voted by the Joint Board on Monday night. And you can't vote on the SAU section, because that section contains the unconfirmed SAU number that needs to be voted on after the public hearing on Monday night. I've already worked with the leadership of the Budget Committee, and if you can go through section by section, minus those two sections, and approve, and go through our warrants and approve what we can, and I've rewritten your warrants and I have notes to change those, then the Budget Committee on Saturday can do the same thing. Then, my recommendation to the board, and the posting's ready to go, but I haven't put it out yet, is that we have a meeting directly after the SAU meeting to vote on those two sections, and then the Budget Committee has graciously adjusted their schedule to take up the matter on Wednesday night, and Mr. Byrne will be joining the Budget Committee for that, and then we're good. And then we can move on to the next round of information. And so, I hope that works. I know it's not, it's a little choppy. It's hard to align the Joint Board's schedule with different schedules, and so...
It's always a fun time.
But I think we have a plan, and it's a well-communicated plan, and it has the support of both bodies, I believe, so...
Sound good to everybody?
Yes.
So, what we'll do then, we'll post a meeting for, after the Joint Board meeting on Monday. And the Joint Board meeting on Monday is going to report one BX, we have to approve the budget then, so, yeah.
If we don't finish the Budget Committee this Saturday, when is their next meeting?
Wednesday, it's twelve, Wednesday.
Wednesday at twelve, all right, so it doesn't interfere with that Monday meeting?
No.
Okay.
Should I put my other hat on?
That's fine, go for it.
If they, if they're allowing you to.
Just to answer your question, Dave, what you're going to do tonight is the same thing the Budget Committee is going to do on Saturday, so we won't close everything out on Saturday. We'll recess to...
I was just worried that we don't have meetings conflicting with SAU or whatever. I'm happy, I'm all set.
I had checked to find out if you had other meetings for the Budget Committee before we set that December twelve, but that's the latest that we can know.
Going forward, just to jump in, what I'd like to do next fall is get together with the Chairman of the Budget Committee in Northwood and the Chairman of the Budget Committee in Nottingham, and try to, try to work, and I think we can do, I know we can do it.
Align calendars and stuff.
As best we can, as best we can.
All right, so let's go through this, let's go through this section by section then, approve them, approve the things that we can, we'll skip over the things that we can't, there's only a couple.
I'll take the practice, if I may. I'd like to move the regular education line, it's on page four of twenty-eight, for the amount of two million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventeen cents.
Second. Do you guys want to go through this page by page?
It's up to you.
I know we got through it a number of times, yeah.
Yeah, it's up to you.
All right, so you want to just take a minute and then take a look and...
If you have any note issues, can you let me know? From the spellings.
So, we go with regular education. I have, I have no questions on it. Does anybody else have any questions? I'm going to wait till you look at me to, let me know that you're done, so if you guys are, I'll take that in queue. All right, so let's, let's vote on this then, all in favor? Yes, motion carries five-zero. I said we can't vote on special education.
Right.
So, this, this section, because this is, the preschool's in this section?
Yes.
So, then our next line is Medicaid on page seven, is that right?
Yep.
I'd like to move Medicaid line for the proposed budget of eight thousand dollars.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
I'd like to move total whole curricular, also on page seven, for the amount of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
I'd like to move the, moving on to page nine, I'd like to move total guidance for one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-six cents.
Guidance or athletic?
Thank you, sorry.
You know what, we can, we can combine them too.
Yeah.
If you'd like.
Okay, I'm going to back up and, are we on total athletic then?
Yep, athletic, summer school.
I'd like to move total, total athletic for thirty-five thousand.
Second.
I might have a question on that. Guys, I got more.
Mostly it's on page seven, probably.
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight, yeah.
No, because remember, your special lines protected, so that'll be very...
And I, I'm sorry, I'm estimating because of a death in the family, but I thought we reduced that, was that one of those figures by a couple of grand? Must have been FICR and all that, retirement. See, we're going all the way back to the first one.
Yeah, so I know what you're talking about. So if you want to give the actuals on their line ninety-eight, zero, four, whatever, the retirement certified, it was three forty-four, a thousand seventy-six, three one six zero. Now we'd propose a four thousand one. And I think that was because the athletic director was not a teacher, correct?
Correct. And you also have to consider, was this the athletic? Right, your previous athletic director in those past years was not a teacher, so they weren't retirement eligible. Your current athletic director is an employee of the school and therefore it's retirement eligible, so you need to reapply the retirement amount. And that also goes for not just your athletic director, but your other.
Coaches, some of the coaches stipends in there.
You've got a budget for the fact that you may have teachers do that rather than outside community members, and that's going to increase your rates.
So are all the coach positions funded as? Teachers? See, it's kind of weird because if they could be a para and have a different rate as well, right? You could have the seventeen, or you could have a one, or you could have zero.
You never know year to year.
Well, well, with that being said, then we should be putting in full insurance for every, all these things we have for stipends. When we pay somebody a stipend for not taking insurance, we should be including that average insurance pay in the budget. So I don't want to do it one time we do it to our advantage and then another time to our disadvantage. It doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's one way of doing it, is to do the worst-case scenario. You can budget for the worst-case scenario, but I don't think we have to budget for the worst-case scenario. We can.
And that is what we do with health insurance G M R's, is we have a guaranteed maximum rate and we budget for that.
We have people that, that don't take insurance and we give them a stipend.
They get a buyout.
They get a buyout. I'm sorry, wrong word. They get a buyout.
Yeah.
But we don't know if they're going to take the buyout next year. So maybe we should budget for twenty-five thousand, which is the cost of a family plan, instead of budgeting for the five thousand dollar buyout.
Yeah, again, we could, and I think that's up to us how we budget this. I mean, we can, we, we could, we could well say, worst, worst-case scenario, we want to budget for everything that could possibly happen.
And I thought at one meeting, okay, now let's go back to the athletic. I thought in the one first meeting, a suggestion was made, and I guess we did, is to take that out because we haven't had teachers coaching in the last three or four years. So it was just, it only came down to a couple of grand out of eleven million, but.
Right. So my opinion on that is. My opinion on that is, is that I don't think we want to budget for the worst-case scenario on everything because that's going to inflate our budget higher than it needs to be, and we'll have a lot of extra money at the end of the year. I think it's reasonable to predict and, you know, make, make some educated guesses as to how much money we're going to spend and budget for that. And hopefully, if we're wrong, we can find the money somewhere.
It's just a fine line you have to play because you just, just don't know. And unfortunately, yeah, you budget for the buyout and then halfway through the year, whatever, they, it's just the game you have to play.
I understand that. I'm just bringing that up because we had discussed it earlier and I thought we made a change, but now it's back in. So I noticed it, so. And I'm happy, it's only a couple of grand on this one, so I'm not going to make a, I'm not going to make us change anything.
The assumption is that the, you know, current athletic director's going to be moving forward, so I think that's reasonable to do for this. And in other situations, maybe not, right?
Okay.
I'm just looking at your monthly financial review, but the problem is, your coaches, you know, that goes by the.
Season. Goes by what?
Goes by the season, so you don't have your encumbered, you can't encumber it, you don't know. I'm trying to, I'm trying to look for some data in the current financials to offer recommendations.
Oh. They don't get paid till after the season ends.
Well, once the stipend forms are in, it's encumbered, so you've paid five-twenty so far. So you could consider.
Which line are we talking about? The FICA?
FICA lines should be calculated into perfect.
For a thousand or two thousand dollars, I don't want to change figures and then we have to print everything all over again and get it into, leave it alone. I just saw it and I brought up a question. I thought we had changed it, but I ain't going to worry about changing it now.
To be honest with you, I can't remember that discussion, but it probably.
I, I understand because you're doing three budgets and we do these.
I'm sorry.
We're making changes since October, so yeah, I, I understand. I'm, I'm, I'm okay. I have no problem.
Okay.
So we made a motion for that, right?
Yeah. All right, we ready to vote? Everybody ready to vote on that then? All in favor of the athletic line total?
Hey, I'd like to move total summer school for the amount of three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Second. Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Okay, I'd like to move total truant officer for eight hundred and eight dollars.
Second.
Anyone oppose? All right. Both consent. I'll start doing that, I think I'll be fine.
Okay. Moving on to back to total guidance for one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, thirty-six cents.
Second.
Absent objection, we'll move on that.
I'm just looking for a second.
Okay, we made that correction.
Good, okay. Like to move total nurse for eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, seventy-six cents.
Second. Anything? Not objection, we'll move forward with that.
I'd like to move total contracted services for one dollar.
Second.
Yeah, I'm just giving you.
Resulting in a ninety-nine point nine-six percent decrease?
Yeah. This is going to be a tough one.
I bet Joe will have a question about that.
We have an answer.
Objection, we'll move on to the next one.
I'd like to move total speech for one hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars, eighty-nine cents.
Second.
Any objections?
Nope.
Okay.
I'd like to move total improvement of instruction, twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and two dollars.
Second.
That was the professional, we added that, we talked about that, right? We were wanting to add that.
What everything? What specifically?
Well, I, I just wanted to remember that conversation. But that, that was brought up by.
It was the increase in the note, that this line includes thirty-six hundred dollars onsite training for the Fanta's and Penno benchmark assessment kits, as well as three thousand for technology institute previously included in a different line. That's your major increase there.
Yep. And that was because of the training on the new.
A new reading assessment.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Absent objection, we'll move on.
All right, I'd like to move total curriculum director for one hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and two dollars, thirty-nine cents.
Second.
Discussion on these? No. Objections? Okay.
I'd like to move total instructional staff training for thirty thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
Second, sorry. Any objections? Great.
Okay, I'd like to move total media for seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars, sixty cents.
Second. Very cool. We're good?
Good.
And we've been a couple of pages. Total other support services, is it on page sixteen? Did I miss anything?
Nope.
I'd like to move total other support services for two hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-three cents.
Second.
Just move those notes along.
What's that? A lot of notes, yeah. Yeah, there'll probably be a lot of questions on it. Any concerns here?
Nope.
All right. I'd like to move total school board services for seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Second.
Does that include?
The biggest chunk here, if I remember correctly, is in the school board expenses for the NEAS, right?
Yep.
Yeah, do with a site visit.
Also, Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Okay.
That change you're going to reference is in there, the treasure increase?
Yeah, I was looking to see what was in there.
Yeah, I knew where.
Make sure that everything's in there.
Look at that, I've known you long enough to know.
I got my notes from the first night. I was saying that we made the corrections, to be sure we made the corrections we had talked about.
Any objections to that one?
And we have to hold SAU expenses, right?
Yep. Yep, skip that for now.
Make a note to myself for Saturday. I would like to move total office of the principal, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Second.
Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to move total maintenance and operations, five hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, thirty-eight cents.
Second.
Jumping in there with the seconds of the table. Usually like to get your name in the minutes.
I know. Somebody reads it in fifty years from now. He didn't fall asleep at the meeting.
Total maintenance and operations, on page twenty.
I'm sorry, we were, I looked at, I did notice the facilities director reflects up to a three percent and has shown as a two point nine seven, so I asked Mr. Byrne to ask Mr. O'Sullivan to look at that and be prepared for the answer if that comes up Saturday. Sorry. That's why I wasn't paying attention.
Should I withdraw the motion on that?
No, no, no.
No, no, it's, it's not being adjusted, it's just, we're making a note that is a question I can.
A potential question.
Okay.
We like to anticipate these things.
Okay.
Yeah. So, okay, yep.
Oh, you know, I just know one particular person's going to ask something about this tractor.
Yep.
Do we know exactly what we're buying? Because I know that's going to be a question. No.
We had an estimate of what we wanted, and then we have to put it out the bid, decide what we want.
My, my, when I get that question, my, my answer will be that this is a recommended budget from the facilities director who has a very clear idea about what he's asking for, so.
But we better know what we're asking for.
A simplicity.
Simplicity.
Simplicity tractor with a snow blower attachment.
The salt spreader in the back.
I'll get that.
We haven't decided.
I'll play the disco ball as well.
I'll play the disco ball. And a chord.
And somebody will ask, are we going to keep the one we got? Are we going to sell it or what are we doing?
The other thing I imagine.
We can make that decision after.
Please.
Sorry to talk over, I didn't mean to.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. The other thing I imagine coming up will be what's going to happen to the existing tractor that I asked, and I know we have a policy about it, but if somebody, I, I can't highlight, I can't summarize the policy offhand. I anticipate on Saturday someone will ask.
You have a disposal of asset policy that governs how you dispose of assets.
And I just, I imagine someone's going to ask for details.
Thanks for the clarity.
But we have an adopted policy that governs that. I'm not going to bring a policy manual with me.
No.
I won't be able to get, get in the door.
Could you, I, I'd like to look it up.
Yeah, because I still want to ask, is it an auction or do you buy it?
No, you try to sell it first. It has a schedule in it. It's like, okay, it's called, it's the disposal of assets, giveaway, throwaway.
And we haven't made that decision yet anyway. We may want to keep it and have two, so it goes faster. We may want to sell it.
I think we should give it to Tim.
Moving on. Anybody, anybody have any problem with the total maintenance and operations? You good?
I would like to move total grounds maintenance for twenty-seven thousand, thirteen dollars, thirty cents.
Second.
Stop seven twenty-one, twenty-two, thirty-two, appropriate.
While we're in here, if we get to the point where septic, septic system pumping, I know it's in here, it's under the grounds or is it a section by itself?
Septic tank maintenance is in the next, second section down.
Okay.
In water. With the water testing.
I just want to know what the.
Okay, we're good with grounds maintenance?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to move total contracted service for fire alarm, five thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
Okay.
I'd like to move total state mandated water testing for two thousand, eight hundred dollars. And this is where the septic line is.
Yeah, did you have a question about that, Mr. Ruth? Did you have a question about the septic maintenance line here? This is the section it's in.
My question was, how much is in this budget at twenty-three hundred? Because we just paid a bill for about, was it twelve hundred or something? It comes a couple of times a year. I just, all of a sudden, I said, well, I might as well check and make sure we have enough in the budget. Looks like we'll be okay.
I can do that.
No, no, I, in other words, when I looked at the budget and I looked at the bills tonight, there was a bill for pumping it out, so the numbers, the numbers are all seem like they're all within reason, I'm all set.
All right.
We can, can we do total school transportation or, do that separate from special ed, right?
You can do that.
Okay, I'd like to move.
And you can do high school special ed.
Great. I'd like to do total school transportation for three hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars, twenty cents.
Second.
All good?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to skip special ed transportation.
I don't think you have to.
We don't, okay. I can move special ed transportation, six one thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty cents.
Second. Hold on one second. Sorry, maybe I lied about that. It's a bus monitor.
You're okay.
Okay, it's a CBA, right? It's not.
You're, you're all right.
Okay. I saw the contract negotiation.
You've gotten through the two budget, you are good to vote on everything till the end now.
But one, listen, one has, one bus monitor, ten hours per week, to and from school at the current rate, which is under CBA negotiation. Right? That hasn't been approved yet.
Wait a minute.
No, that's.
That's a mistake. It should just say the current rate. That's not a, or the contracted rate.
So get rid of the which under?
We just got a, one bus monitor, ten hours per week, to and from school at the current rate.
Right, okay, so it doesn't have to be approved because we're fine with that.
Right, it's not a cost.
Yeah, okay.
But the note needs to be corrected. Where you got it?
Yep.
All right, I'd like to move total athletic transportation, six thousand, four hundred dollars.
Second. Okay.
I'd like to move total class field trip transportation for one thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay.
We have to move zero on bond payment.
Probably.
Okay, I'd like to move zero dollars for the bond, total bond payments.
That, the good news for you is that will go away after this year.
Yes.
It will come out of the system.
Right, because it's gonna move past.
It's gonna move past the history.
Same thing with transfer to food service, probably, for zero dollars. I'd like to move that as well.
Who's seconding those?
Second.
Should I just split it between you guys?
Like any one of us.
Have a second?
And I'd like to move total food service for one hundred, twenty-four thousand, fifty-six dollars.
Second.
Turn's there. Okay. Total elementary costs, we're gonna leave out, right?
Sorry, I'm trying to help.
So there will be questions about food service costs, because it always comes with that budget rating, so.
It would be, it's based on what they project in their contract.
Yep.
So we're gonna hold on that?
We'll hold on the elementary, total elementary costs.
I don't think you're, it's necessary, I, I, that's not really a cost number, it's not necessarily, I don't believe that's necessary to vote on anyway.
Yeah.
The total elementary.
Total elementary, it's just summary.
It's a summary.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna be voting on.
Okay.
Well, let me think, let me think.
Then we need to do that Wednesday.
No, it's, it's, it's just a breakdown between elementary and high school, so no, we don't need to.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to move total high school regular education for three million, five hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and tw- seventy-two dollars, three cents.
Second.
Any objection to this one?
Nope, that's the new co-ground rate that we have in here, so we're all set.
Say two point eight.
Four.
Yep.
Appreciate the note with all the breakdown.
Yeah, yeah.
That's super helpful.
Yep.
High school special education is good. I'd like to move total high school special education eight hundred, seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Okay.
I'd like to move total high school speech twenty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars, eighty-one cents.
Second.
All right.
Shane, you're next. I'd like to move total high school transportation one hundred and five thousand, four hundred and nine, nine dollars, seven cents.
Shane!
All right.
All righty.
So we're good with total high school.
Yep, we don't need to vote on that.
I'd like to move total high school cost four million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
We have to do that as a summary.
Okay, just in summary.
Yep.
We're not gonna do grant.
I think that's it.
So while you can't vote on this, but I think it's important for the public to know that your overall budget at this point in time is down three hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars, or three point oh eight percent.
Which is. I'm just, I'm just curious myself as to what the tax rate would be for.
Minus, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Why are you doing that?
I would hope so.
Excuse me, hold on.
You know, just for this amount, do you have the number for that?
Yeah, the tax rate.
It's not in the warrant article.
It's in my warrant article.
All right, it's not in the one I sent. I'm just curious what the reduction is. Do you have a note for it?
It's tw- it, I believe it's twenty-eight cents less. Yeah? So, I'm gonna adjust your warrants based on calculations, so sixteen fifty-one per thou- per one thousand, and of course, this is your worst-case estimate, too, you have to remember that, you haven't considered a fund balance, you know, and all that stuff. But I'll get to it when we get to the warrants, but it's, the, the budget, as it is now, is sixteen fifty-one, which is down from sixteen seventy-nine, I think.
Yeah.
And then your default is sixteen thirty-nine, as it sits now.
That number just doesn't jive with me, just because, based on the estimates of, you know, the total valuation of the town, it seems like it'd be closer to like eighty cents, but.
Yeah. Would you have Mr. O'Sullivan verify that in his spreadsheet tomorrow? We can verify that.
He's probably right, I'm just, because it's not, it's not as simple as just taking the total values.
We're cracking through budgets right now, so.
What's the total savings, three hundred and what?
What's that?
What's the total savings?
Three sixty-three, eight hundred and forty-two.
It's gotta be more than.
Right, you figure one dollar.
Twenty-eight cents.
One dollar gets about half a million.
Yeah, four hundred.
Four hundred ninety-six, or something.
It's not that high. About what they announced at this, I wanna say it was like four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, but don't quote.
Okay, if that's true, it went down a lot. Yeah. Yeah, maybe, if it went down a lot, yeah. But still, that's, that's closer to like an eighty cents, or, you know, the.
Well, that's what we're calculating now, but by the time it goes through in the, next summer, and then gets back around through it, it'll be changed, but we have a rough estimate, anyway.
So, Mr. Byrne's gonna have Mr. O'Sullivan sort of walk through that again, and, and check his values.
It's probably fine.
It's okay to double-check, or, actually, it's okay to triple, quadruple. So, all right, so, as you've been sitting here approving things, I've been writing them down. We're gonna present an updated default budget to the Budget Committee, we're explaining the changes in the default budgeting to the Budget Committee, but that really is your budget. So, as I'm thinking, you have copies of the current default, I don't believe you need to vote on that tonight, because if there's any adjustments to the regular operating budget.
Yeah, right.
That'll affect your default, and we can put that on your agenda for the, your quick meeting Monday night.
And just, just approve the whole default budget?
With any changes that come from Saturday. They don't.
They don't.
They don't, but I, but I feel like.
So they understand it.
I, I feel like we need to educate the Budget Committee and help them understand that, and, because they can ask some tough questions that may get asked from the, from the public, and that gives us an opportunity to prepare those responses.
But this is the default budget that will be going to the Budget Committee on Saturday. You're right, I don't think we need to vote on it unless someone has any objection, we'll just say, we'll put it in the packet, and then we'll, be ready to ask any question, answer any questions on it.
And I have the Budget Committee Chair copy of that.
Okay, great.
So that brings us to warrants. So I have notes all over my warrants, because again, we turned this around rather quickly. So. In the warrants in your packet, if you look at, you can't vote on Article Two, but I'll go through some of the updates and corrections.
This is why the, this is likely why the reduction in the tax rate is not fully explained by the reduction in our budget, because of our income from the adequacy grant, has probably been reduced.
Well, what we do with your adequacy, and actually, this sheet has an error, and I have a new one for the Budget Committee, but if you, let's turn to tax impact. Just go through that quick.
There's this one right here.
I'll explain what I found today.
So it's a total, it's a district assessment that determines the tax rate, right, so it's the reduction here that matters.
Well, one thing is, see that note down the side, which is ninety-five percent of the eighteen nineteen, that note actually belongs up top, and Mr. O'Sullivan has recalculated that. So, when we do your adequacy number, I have your adequacy estimate, but that is an estimate, so the past practice of the business office has been to do a ninety-five percent estimate of that, just to make sure that if there is a reduction, you're covered. So, I think that might help explain your question, but you're gonna get an updated sheet, this changed a little bit, so that's why. So, and of course, we can't finish the column for two thousand and nineteen, because we don't know in the two thousand and nineteen budget what we're going to return to the town, and we don't know what the actual tax rate, so that's an empty tracker for us to give to the Budget Committee next year.
Yep.
And then move a column on. Does that make sense?
So if you look at this, right, the two thousand, you look at what, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, the district assessment was a little over eight million, right? And then our estimate, though, for this year, actually, the district assessment has gone up. Even though our budget has gone down. Right?
Twenty-seven eighteen, yeah.
District assessment is what we actually bring in from taxes, right? And seventeen eighteen is a little over eight million. Our budget has gone down by three hundred and sixty-three thousand, or whatever, yet our estimated district assessment has gone up by three hundred.
Because your revenues have gone down.
That's.
Right.
That's my guess, right?
Or your, or your valuation went, I, I.
Right, well, no, no, that, that doesn't matter, this doesn't matter on the valuation.
Should be a combination of things.
Not, not this, the district assessment does not depend on the valuation.
Right, right.
Right, this is, because this is the total amount of money that comes in, right.
But if your revenues have decreased, then that's gonna be your.
Right.
Right, and your revenues have decreased, your, your catastrophic aid has decreased, which is a good thing, because to look for your catastrophic aid to increase is sort of a death strategy, because it means your expenditures have increased, you know.
So, I mean, this, this looks like it's, so, the district assessment's gone up by about three hundred thousand, our budget's gone down by about three hundred thousand, a little bit more, so that means our revenues have decreased by six hundred thousand dollars?
That doesn't seem right.
Right, that doesn't seem right, right.
So.
I mean, it's, it's down some, but.
We're gonna have Mr. O'Sullivan check that tomorrow.
We should go, just say that, you know, geez, if the budget hadn't gone down three hundred thousand, it would have been even higher.
Twice, yeah. But it doesn't seem to add up, though, right, this, we should see, you know, if there was, and maybe there is, but there would be a six hundred thousand dollar figure here somewhere, right? And it doesn't look like that, it looks like our revenue's gone up. Our adequacy, our adequacy went down a little bit, that's not a big deal.
Your adequacy went down.
This is about the same.
It's down.
Yeah.
It's down sixty thousand.
Yeah, sixty, but not six hundred.
Down a hundred and.
No, it's a hundred and fifty-ish.
Yeah, right.
So now we're talking two hundred, maybe. So there's another, this is another, this is up. Yeah, it seems like we're missing, we're missing this.
Mr. Byrne or how?
Well, four hundred thousand dollars here.
We'll look at that tomorrow.
Yeah, maybe, maybe this just isn't right, you know, this number, maybe that's just.
Yeah.
I don't know, right?
You got that, Nate?
Because, I mean, this is, this is our budget, right? This is our bottom-line number for our budget.
Not corrected yet.
Sure, but close enough, but close enough, so.
Right.
One would think that we could add up our revenue and our assessment, and get that number.
Yeah, it's about three thousand dollars on it, right now. Just because we haven't updated.
Three thousand dollars, but this is, yeah, yeah. Anyway, okay, we'll look into that. Yep. All right, sorry to go off subject here for a second.
That's okay.
All right, so warrant articles?
So, warrant articles, just to let you know, where it says, see where it says, further. I've changed the date there to, actually, to align with two thousand and nineteen instead of two thousand and eighteen. These have been gone over by the attorney, but they still found some things. In Article Two, the new number will be the eleven, four, sixty-four, one eighty-four, and then the default number right now will be eleven thousand, four hundred and ten, you can't really vote on that now. Article Three is your building reconfiguration process?
Yep.
Project, your school safety project, let's talk about that for a little bit. I am gonna ask Ms. Young to bring me one of the Option Two boards. Now, we're dancing a little bit, because of school security, on the other hand, once the security's done, we're gonna know, anyway. So I am briefly going to review that with the Budget Committee, that, that proposal for the warrant. I'm not gonna go into a lot of details about various features. I'm gonna go over the orange sections and eliminating cross-traffic between the adults and some of the door reconfigurations, but the other things, I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail on. But I think that you're in a unique situation, in that you're looking for a warrant to pass, and we have to balance the information that we provide with the safety and security of the school. You have thoughts about that?
I don't understand why you, once the, once we do it and it's built, everybody's gonna know as they walk in with the kids.
They're not gonna know certain things.
Right, although some, but not all.
They're gonna know.
They're gonna know the physical part of it.
Right.
Right, and that's the part I'm gonna present, but I'm not gonna present, like, technology features or things like that. I'm gonna say technology features, but I'm not gonna talk specifically.
Is there any way, I mean, I know we can't do it in the warrant article, but maybe when you're talking about this Saturday, I mean, it, it may be worth pointing out that we have a grant that we're, this money was somehow, I don't.
I'll do that.
Yeah, I wish there was some other way of getting it, I wish we put it in the article somehow, you know, saying that this money was, gonna be used in a combination.
Put it on our PowerPoint.
Yeah, that's true.
For deliberative.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we'd nothing at the ballot box, you know, but yeah, you're right, I'll definitely, we'll definitely do it on PowerPoint.
Again, I, I missed a meeting last time, but you, what of those physical features that was presented to us, what did you approve that you wanna do for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
So, no, so, the board chose to go with the second option, the full second option, so it was four hundred, the total cost was something around four hundred and seventy thousand.
Four ninety, something like that.
Four ninety. And so, we had a meeting as to how we were going to fund that all, you know, we have the grant for a hundred thousand dollars from the state that we could use, we were going to ask for, from the town, for the two hundred and fifty, and then that leaves us something with, oh, you got it here?
Yeah.
Something with another hundred and forty thousand, or something like that, left, that we would have come up with, that we were planning on taking out of our capital reserve funds.
And the money that you saved this year for.
And in a surplus, if we have.
I would, I would think you've gotta put that in the warrant article, you can't just ask for two hundred and fifty grand, you gotta tell them we wanna spend six hundred thousand dollars, and this is how we're gonna pay for it, and we're down to, we need two fifty from the town. I don't know how you can just ask, then.
Not sure what you mean by that.
Right now, we have a warrant article, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the town. You just said we're gonna spend six hundred thousand dollars.
No.
Four hundred something, all right, so four hundred.
Yeah.
So, we've gotta spend four hundred, we've gotta explain to the town what we're, what we're gonna do and that, without giving out any secrets.
No, I agree.
But that's not a secret, the amount of money.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, we have to tell them that, yeah, yeah, totally, I just.
I don't mean to talk about it, we have to have something in the.
For them to pay that amount. Exactly.
And, but you gotta explain that.
That's.
I'm confused, and I'm gonna vote on it, one way or the other, and people in town are gonna say, wait a minute, we're talking about my pocketbook, how are we, how are you, what are you building, and how are you paying for it, or how are we paying for it, the town?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this, at the Budget Committee and at the deliberative session, we're definitely gonna go through all that, I mean, in slides and, and present it to everybody. I just don't know that we can.
But I think the warrant article said to raise appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand of a four hundred and ninety thousand dollar project.
I'm writing, I'm writing right now, so just keep talking.
So they know that we want two hundred and fifty thousand of a four hundred and ninety thousand dollar project. Is that what you're asking?
Right, you gotta explain everything a lot better. Okay, where are we getting the other two hundred thousand dollars from? How are you, how are you?
You don't have to explain that in the warrant article, but you, you can?
You do. I would think you do, but maybe somebody else can come up with a better opinion.
That's because people don't attend the deliberative sessions, so.
No, 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 we can't go, people don't come in or don't show up, we, we have to explain it.
I'm just saying, they don't.
They don't, fine, but we have to explain it.
That makes sense, though, I mean, like, there are people that are not going to deliberate session, if, if we can get that information in the, in the warrant article.
But they're gonna vote in a booth, so they have to understand what they're voting for in the booth, whether they show up at deliberative or not.
So, how do we put that in there?
The total cost of this project is four hundred and ninety-six thousand, the district is qualified for a hundred thousand dollar grant, the balance will be funded in, of capital reserve funds, and then I'm going to add the other piece in a minute.
I can give you a very brief example, if you'd like, with the town, when they're buying a fire truck, or an ambulance, or something of that nature, or they have a warrant article for a town truck. Two hundred thousand dollars, you know, go to expend two hundred thousand dollars, of, of which, one hundred thousand dollars will be coming from the road maintenance capital reserve fund, leaving a balance of X amount of dollars to be raised by taxation. That's the usual language for that, and I can grab that tonight and send it to you if you like. In other words, the, the, the motion has to include the total amount, the four seventy-nine. Funding for this appropriation will be one hundred thousand dollar. Security grant, or the grant. Twenty thousand from that other fund, the sixty thousand from.
That's a hundred thousand.
Reserve, I think it was fifty thousand from your building capital reserve fund, or, one was surplus, one was, you know, leaving a balance of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be raised by taxation. And then the, the tax impact of that two hundred and fifty thousand is X. That's how the town does any articles that they're taking monies and not raising the full amount of the warrant article from, by taxation. Because either way, you're spending four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, even that hundred thousand's gonna go through the book somewhere, I think, right?
Yeah, it'll come in.
Yeah, it'll come in.
So you, basically, you're asking for the authorization to spend the, the total, four seventy-nine, whatever it is. But we're only asking you to raise.
Right.
That two hundred and fifty, but you need to.
I like all that information in there, for sure, I think it makes things clear. I'm a little worried that it changes the intent a little bit, in that.
How does it?
Well, because now, if it gets voted down, if it gets voted down, then we can't do anything, right, because if they, no means no, you know, whereas, if the, if we're just asking to raise the two fifty, and that gets voted down, we still have the grant that we could use, I think. I'm not sure how that works.
The grant is the grant, that's a separate funding mechanism, I believe. But that might be something worth asking legal.
So if this, if this warrant, I just have a question, if this warrant gets voted down, we've got, we've been given that money, is it still our money to do something with?
No.
At all?
Not unless they modify the application.
Okay. How long?
Oh, because the application was for the full project.
Okay.
Okay. No, yeah, I would, that's, thank you, that clears it up for me, too, actually. All right, are we happy with that wording that was suggested by our secretary for that? And we'll leave it to Mr. Byrne, too.
You're gonna read it back to me, please.
Well, I know that we have it.
We know I'm doing the math.
Right, we don't have it yet.
Second here.
So we're not approving this tonight?
Well, no, just.
I'm just asking.
We can prove it on Monday.
If, I mean. Well, if we. The Budget Committee for Wednesday.
I'm sorry?
Right, if we prove it Monday.
Hold that warrant and have that included on Wednesday.
We can do that.
So.
I can deal with the budget.
Yeah?
Let me just.
I'd say let's do that. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, and, and we can make note of, this is the, the, the amount that we're asking for the town to fund, I mean, we can, that's not gonna change, it's just we're working on the wording.
We can discuss it, we just wouldn't vote on it, just as we did with some of the town.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
But are we also asking them for us to accept the hundred grand for, eight, approximately a hundred grand from the state, and we are gonna spend X amount of dollars out of our, our reserve fund, we're asking for that all at the same time? We have permission to spend it, which would actually be at a different meeting, but I don't think it's in the warrant, but, but if we take, if we take money out of a reserve fund, we hold a public meeting.
Right, you're the agent of the fund.
So.
But it can all be.
But if it's in the warrant that we're taking money out of that, and the warrant gets turned down, then is that, you, the question you brought up, does that mean we can't take the money out of the fund we already have?
Right, that's, probably, it's, I think we gotta run it by legal, that's what we lost out on, I mean.
I don't think that would preclude you from taking it out of the funds.
Yeah, because you already established agents. Yeah, because you already established agents of the fund. We can call Gordon tomorrow.
Yeah. And if he doesn't like, for some reason, doesn't like how it is phrased, or our suggested phrasing here, see if there's something that will work, because I think getting that information into the warrant will be...
He checked us warrant already. I'm just gonna have him re-clarify.
Yeah.
Yeah, again...
So he checked the one we have?
All these warrants, except for... Yes, all these warrants have been checked.
I mean...
In fact, he wrote the warrant for the...
What's the...
He wrote the warrant for the... He wrote warrant article number six.
I mean, yeah, I mean, that's fine. He checked it.
Yeah.
Because what we proposed to him is legal, but doesn't mean it's the only thing we can do, so...
Well, sorry, so if I seem that I could check...
Really?
Yeah. I'm thinking, because the only thing that, were I on the school board, I would wanna clarify, is still being able to spend the total amount of... I don't know how that runs through the books. This goes...
You mean the grant? How's the grant run through the books?
How the grant runs through the books, right.
Okay, you don't... So you're not really raising it... What you're gonna do is create a tracking line in your budget, not a reason appropriate, right?
Okay.
You're gonna overspend that by $100,000.
Okay.
And then you're gonna file your paperwork, and then the revenue's gonna come back.
Okay.
So, maybe we can...
I think...
Maybe we can just do kind of what you said, but not put in all the details of exactly where everything's coming from.
Right. Now that I've seen the article, again, just thinking with my budget committee head, or hat, or whatever it is.
I'm still gonna run it by him.
Oh, definitely run it by him.
Yeah, but I do think that... I do think that this will fly. There will be questions.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, the more information we can put into that, the more the voters will see, too, so that's...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. This is why...
I hate to be a thorn in the side of all of you guys, but I don't know if we can have another non-public meeting afterwards, because I'd like to know what you approve, and you're talking about part two, and I'm confused about there's so many pots to part two, what it is you're actually wanna do.
I think we can have another...
I can show you, Dave.
Yeah, we could.
Okay, so it's not this?
I think we might still be wearing this tomorrow.
So it's this plus all of these costs to have...
Two days in a row, Dave.
We're recommending these as have to.
Yep.
Because that makes it... Just the votes when people go into...
It's gonna be a nice day.
Those costs are also included in this 147, I think.
Right, the budget committee wants...
Yeah, it's included in this number.
Yeah, makes sense. I remember that.
That seems...
This is odd.
It's odd, but those figures were taken on that.
The budget committee needed...
No?
You know, I get that, no, definitely.
We broke it out before.
Yep. And all these, the 349, 129. Now, show me here. We're gonna do all this? To me, it's a waste of jags.
Yep.
It's ridiculous. I'm gonna vote no. Okay, I understand.
Okay.
So I'm gonna check all that anyway, even though there was a takeback.
That's fine, we can...
And we can just hold it.
On Saturday, we can...
We can just hold it.
We can talk about it on Saturday, but then, you know, ask them to wait on the vote until Wednesday.
Yep, yep, yep. All right.
So, Article four?
Article four, the changes to Article four, paraeducators needs to be Northwood Educational Support Staff. And then, your 2019, 2020 number is... Can I give that to you to write?
Yep.
2020 to 2021 is 45,784. 2122 is 42,032. And then the blank down below becomes 49,163. And then the tax impact if that article passes is 11 cents.
Could you just repeat the 2122 line?
42,032.
Thank you.
You can say 032, because you're writing...
42, comma, 42, comma, 032.
That's happened to me three times now. Okay, so I think it's time for us to take a motion to recommend this article.
Make a motion to recommend Article number four.
Okay.
Do I have to read it now?
Nope.
Do not read it.
As written and modified.
As written and modified.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor of recommending it? Any opposed? No? Recommended five? Article, oops. Go ahead. Article five, take it over.
Article five is just, there's no changes to that article. It's just up to the board to decide if they wanna... If Article four fails to authorize the school district to hold a future meeting date at a date in time to be determined by the school board to consider business not completed at this time.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article five.
Second. Any discussion on this? This does seem a little bit...
A little confused to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other times when we saw articles like this, it was to address the cost items of Article four only, or something like that, or...
No, so we do it, then we have to have... We would have to convene another town election, a town vote. That's what that means.
Yep.
Okay. What I don't understand is the very last line, the school board does not recommend this out of...
That's just language that I can change.
Okay, well, but it's gotta be changed.
It's just sample language I put in the article, so when you do things, I can change it. So I put in the affirmative, and then I put in some negatives. Just...
So Brian, you motioned. Who made the second?
Mr. Wells.
Thank you.
Is there any explanation as to why we don't have the cost items only, like it's been in previous years? It just seems, I mean, I'm okay with it, it just seems like it opens it up that we can do... If Article four passes, we can call a new meeting and do anything for that meeting, right? As opposed to what it was in the previous years, I've seen, is if Article four fails, we can have a new meeting just for redoing Article four, or whatever, coming up with the new cost. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, and I'm trying to remember the word. I wish I dropped my reports with me, like I have the budget in here.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's... This is perfectly open enough for us to do what we need to do, and obviously, that's the only reason we would do that, but...
City...
We can change it later, too, right? We can recommend it, and then we go down after, right?
Artist group?
Oh, it's a real thing? Go ahead, is it? It authorizes us to hold or not hold the meeting.
Right.
Multitask, multitask. Come on. Three things.
I think it was...
Oh, no, I'm trying to look for an email.
...to Article four.
Right, right. Yeah, that's always what it was.
As opposed to business not completed at this time. I've never seen that kind of language before. But I wouldn't say cost items only. I would just say cost items is contained in Article four.
Yeah, yeah. That's kind of what I was thinking, too. Were you looking up the old ones?
I'm looking for the legal letter.
Oh, you actually have an answer for this, then?
I may.
Okay. This is not a cost item, so actually, there's no rush on getting this to the budget committee, because they're not gonna vote on this one anyway.
Correct.
All right. So what I would recommend we do, maybe it's either... I mean, if people are happy with the way it is, fine, we can vote on it now, and then have Mr. Running, like, maybe look into the rewording, and if it comes back and we wanna reword it, we can...
I'd have to vote on it after he rewords it, wouldn't we?
Yeah, if he does.
I'm just gonna redraw my motion, or resend my motion.
Well, I don't know if it's necessary right now. I mean, unless you guys don't wanna vote on this right now. I mean...
It's not something that the budget committee wants to vote on.
Right, right, that's true. There's no rush on it, I suppose.
So it's just wait.
Then I'm gonna resend my motion.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, does this make sense to you guys? I brought it up, but it's not necessarily... It's just my opinion, so if you guys want to move forward.
Yeah, no, let's have a good discussion about it with a lot of information.
So, Mr. Running, I think we're gonna... The board would like to look into seeing if we get some wording added to Article five. To make it more like the previous years where it's, you know, to address the cost issues of Article four, or whatever.
Yep.
Article six. This is the school resource officer article.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Article, or recommend Article six.
Second?
Any discussion on this? Yeah.
This article's contingent on the passage of a warrant article at the Town of Northwood annual meeting, blah, 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 blah. Is that gonna be the similar wording in their article from the...
I think it is. I think they have...
They already have it. It was at the budget committee last Saturday, and they had the same language, or similar language.
That for the 20%.
For the record, it was recommended by the budget committee at like 10 to 3, or something like that.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
So either are, if it's approved here and not approved there, it's...
Either one.
Either both have to be approved.
Or if we don't approve it there, okay.
Yep, that makes... All right, any other discussion?
Are you taking notes on this, 'cause I'm...
We're good on this. There's nothing to do, nothing here yet. All in favor of recommending this article as written? Any opposed? So, this recommended four to one. And that's all of our warrant articles.
Yeah.
You wanna go back to Article five?
I wanna go back to Article five.
Of course you do. Be here till midnight, then.
Nope. I happen to have options. You ready?
Yep.
Here's your other option. Shall the Northwood School District, if Article four is defeated, authorize the school board to call one special meeting at its option to address Article four cost items only?
Perfect.
That's exactly what I wanted to say.
Second.
So, do you wanna...
Copy paste.
We'll change that?
I'll get it.
Get it in the meeting? Okay.
I can give it to you right now.
Do people want to...
Yeah.
People wanna vote on the warrant article?
It's a...
Worded, Leslie?
Yes.
So we'll need a motion, then?
I second it. Well...
Some moves.
Yeah, second. Got him, okay. So could you read that again, just before we...
Shall the Northwood School District, comma, if Article four is defeated, comma, authorize the school board to call one special meeting at its option to address Article four cost items only.
I think that's perfect. Any other discussion? All in favor of recommending that? Oh, sorry, did you have something?
Nope, no, I'm on that.
All right. Favor of recommending that? Okay, recommended five zero.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Question, back to Article three. If we're gonna vote on it on Monday, I mean, what about the budget committee? Would they... We don't know if they'd wanna vote on it Saturday, or they'll...
Well, they do on Wednesday.
They'll wait.
But if we don't get to on Saturday, we're taking that Wednesday.
There's, and Mr. Ruth, there's also some town business still to be completed, I believe, the fire department line, and then the bottom line from the town. So they'll be... They'll be resending the meet on Wednesday, the 12th, no matter what.
Well, I know there's time. I just wanted to please whatever the budget committee, they asked us to have all the articles ready, and I know things come up and we get problems, but...
You have the articles, for them to know what your intent is, waiting for a reasonable payment, or clarification on a figure.
Doesn't change.
And I think they'll be, as Mr. Running said, he'll be there to present what he can in public and field questions, so I think, I feel pretty comfortable.
Well, that was what else I wanted to raise, is to make sure that we all... Everybody's confident about what's being presented to the budget committee, so there is as little confusion as we can possibly make, which I think is gonna be real hard to present that article without facts and figures.
Yeah, right now.
Okay, enough said.
Yes, so can we go back to Article four for a minute, I don't know if you need to revote this, but I did find there was just a clause that was missed. So if you look at that, see where it says current staffing levels? See that in Article four? There just should be a comma over those paid in the prior fiscal year. Calling, that's the older.
So, so comma over those?
Yeah, I don't know if you need to revote on that, you're not substantially changing that.
On the comma? Well, that's loud.
Staffing levels, comma.
We heard you.
When you do five budgets.
What's after the comma?
Staffing levels, comma, over those paid in the prior fiscal year.
So I'd like to see just a motion to amend that, and we don't have to re-recommend it, but.
What is it to amend, the Article four?
I'll second it.
Don't care with everybody?
Yep.
Alright, we'll go ahead and recommend that.
Yeah, I'll say that way, so.
Alright.
Thank you. Alright, I think we're done warrant articles.
Yep, I just wanna go over, so we're holding on three until I get some clarification from Attorney Brad.
Yeah, I think, just to clarify, I think.
Yep.
It's, it sounds like what the board would like to see, is that if we can put it in there, the total cost of the project and where at least some of the funding is coming from is referenced. Does that sound about right? That's what we wanna see in our.
Well, and also then, that it's, it's gonna be for a lot of article, a lot of equipment that we're not, we don't feel like we should.
Well, I don't think that should be in the warrant.
That doesn't go into the warrant article, though.
I don't think that should be in the warrant, but.
Well, questions will come up, I would imagine, it's like, what are you gonna do, what kinda construction are you doing in there, what are you tearing apart, or what are you building?
Well, I agree.
There will be times to answer all those questions before the.
Right, but what do we want in the, what do we want in the warrant article, right? I would like to see some reference of, of the grant at least in there, saying that this is not the full cost of the project, we have grant money that we're adding to, you know, something.
I understand, but the Budget Committee, I'm just.
If it's approved, you're gonna start some of the work this year, so you can use some.
That's correct.
Funds that you've set aside. You're gonna talk about that.
Yeah, I guess we can do that, right?
You have to do that, you have to do that, you would have, yeah, you're gonna have to start paying some fees and stuff this year.
Any, any, I mean, I don't know that we need the full details of every number, where we're getting every dollar from, but.
We've got those details, but.
But you're, you are going to tell the Budget Committee all of that, right, is that what you're worried about?
Yeah, I think you're gonna be.
I'm fine with telling about it, I don't, I just don't want it in the.
You're gonna ask the Budget Committee to vote on us spending money, so you gotta have.
Right.
And then after that, we're gonna have a deliberative session, and people will have.
I, I definitely want to have.
Like, what are you gonna be doing, what are you tearing apart for?
I wanna have all the information, put it out there. I don't want those numbers in the warrant article themselves, though, because then we don't have the flexibility to change if we want to. Like, I'm afraid that if we put something in there saying we're gonna take out, you know, a hundred thousand from our capital reserve fund, and sixty thousand from our surplus or whatever, and we turn out to have a big giant surplus, and we want to just, okay, we'll just take more money from that and less out of our capital reserve fund next year when we're funding this project, I think that should be our option to do, to do that, and I think if we put it in the warrant article, like, that we're spending money, this money from here, this money from here, this money from here, and it gets voted on, if not legally, it actually, you know, it, it kinda forces our hand, you know, in, in having to do that. Maybe not legally, but morally, right, I mean, 'cause this is what we said we were gonna do. So I'm okay with putting like the hundred thousand from the security grant in there, and then saying, you know, the rest will be funded from capital reserve funds and surplus or whatever.
Fund, and how much are we taking out?
Hundred and twenty thousand? You have, as of October thirty first, you have a hundred and three in your school building, and then twenty five, twenty thousand five hundred in your ground, your, the one that shifted.
That's not a hundred, roughly one twenty five, hundred twenty five thousand, give or take.
And then you've got money that you set aside for the potential resource officer this year that's sitting in your budget, so therefore if you started your work this year, you could use that, and that would make up the balance.
So we set aside this year money for the School Resource Officer.
Yeah.
We didn't end up spending it, because we didn't get, so, in theory, we have an extra surplus of sixty.
So once we take all that money out of surplus, then we have no money for surplus, so we have a warrant out in front of us.
Nope, that's.
So. Of course, I've done this math in the middle of conversations, but what it appears to me is you're looking at about sixty nine thousand out of your capital reserves.
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand what you just said.
So, four, give the number there, four.
Alright, I don't.
On your proposal, Dave, the number I circled through.
It's up here, okay, alright, I've got so many pieces of paper here.
I'm gonna call it four eighty for fun, okay?
Yeah, it's easier.
So four eighty. You're gonna take off a hundred.
Three eighty, got it.
That's the easy part.
Yep.
Then you're gonna take off two fifty. Right?
That we're asking the town to.
Yeah?
Okay.
Now you're, you're at one thirty.
Yeah.
Right? You're, if the vote passes, you're starting, you're talking about starting some of that work this year, so that's sixty out of this year. That'd be seventy.
Were you sixty out of this year, where from?
So, so the plan, when we came up with this two hundred fifty thousand number, the plan was, because we did not use the money that is in our budget right now for the School Resource Officer, that we would use the money for this instead. That's where the sixty's coming from. It was, it was stuff that we pre-bought on previous year's budget, to free up money in this year's budget, in the case that we hired a School Resource Officer, but then we didn't. Right, like, we bought, well, I forget what it was, there's some couple of technology things that were on our list, that we, that were in our budget this year, that we bought previous years, and we wouldn't have to do that.
Actually.
Reminded.
If you look, with no other, with no other problems at all with our budget from now until June, we're assuming we're gonna have that sixty thousand dollars. Unless something else come up, then we don't have that sixty thousand.
Right, if we, if we paid every penny that we budgeted for, right now, in our, in our, this year, right, we would have an extra sixty thousand dollars at the end.
So then I go, you're hoping off of that sixty thousand, that you're gonna take seventy thousand out of our capital reserve.
Right.
If you, if you would open your budget binder to the tab that says current financials.
What page is that on?
One.
You got it all the way, my brain's going, and he's talking, and.
Your brain.
Going in one here and off the other.
You got it? Now flip to the, flip to the last page. And, do you have this?
Yeah. Okay.
No, I just wanted to show you, so this is, you look confused about the.
I, I know, I know you save sixty three thousand dollars, and I understood that, but I'm trying to say, where are you getting all the money to do this big project of four hundred seventy nine thousand, you were explaining that to me. My worry was, we were eliminating the whole trust fund.
Yeah.
But we didn't explain that to me at the beginning of the meeting, so another four thousand people that vote are gonna want the answers too.
Yeah.
That's all.
No, I agree with you there. I'm sorry, you looked confused. I just wanted to make sure.
I was trying to get to the bottom line of where the money was coming from, to pay for this project.
What I was trying to do, piece it in for you, so. Let's extract this.
In theory, right, 'cause those are costs that were eliminated because we're gonna have an SRO, no, we don't have an SRO, those costs were not eliminated, although we haven't hired anybody.
You don't have that.
In theory.
So.
And we don't have that either now.
Exactly, so right back to where we started. I am, I play devil's advocate, and I'm actually a voter, and I, I pay taxes, so I, I wanna know too, where everything is coming from. And right now, we're gonna ask this town for a lot of money, and it doesn't look like we have all our ducks in a row, it, that's to me, as, everything is very confusing.
So do you just want the balances of all of the capital reserves?
No, don't need that, we have a project, you, we're gonna ask the town for two hundred fifty thousand dollars in a warrant article. Everybody in the town is gonna have questions, what else are you doing, what are you spending on, where are you getting the money from? I'm bringing these questions up to us, so we don't go to a deliberative session or a Budget Committee meeting on Saturday, and look like we don't know what the hell we're talking about. That's what I don't want us to have, I don't want that to happen to us, I want us now being a pain in the butt, but I'm trying to be a pain in the butt to say, we better be prepared.
No, Dave, I, I was gonna say that word.
Well, we went to a meeting with the selectmen about having a SRO, and we got our hand, our blankety-blank handed to us as we walked out with our tail between our legs. We did not do a good job, I think we have better make sure we do a good job if this is what we want. That's all.
I don't think we, I think we did a good job, I don't think they just, they wanted.
They didn't want anything to do with it.
They didn't wanna listen.
It didn't matter what I said, I could've came out with a huge project and presentation, and would've just said no. It wasn't a matter of, oh, okay, we won't have, we don't need that discussion tonight.
I've got a piece of paper over here called the agenda.
That's yours.
Listen, listen, anything else we wanna talk about with the warrants or the budget, I think we're all set with that. Raise the tractor now?
It was under.
Don't even.
Every week I'm like, I don't, I didn't.
You need to know, see where it's coming in. No, I'm gonna let you, you know. You're on, sorry, I'm completely off the agenda.
That's all, that's for new business, let's go, let's stick to the agenda. Alright, go back to our packets, starting on page forty seven. Mr. Byrne, are we gonna present this?
This, no.
No, alright, okay, it's just for our, for our.
For your enjoyment.
The CBN statistical report?
Yeah.
That is just a, that's just a.
For your information.
For the information.
Your information, that was the reports that were distributed at the joint. I just wanted to make sure that you had those.
Thank you then, so we will read this at our leisure. Do we wanna have this in the minutes? The.
Did we put them in at the last meeting, where we had the, after, I don't think we did.
I've been looking at minutes to try and figure out how you guys wanted them, and I've seen graphs and charts like this.
Yeah, we have.
In, and some don't. I'll do whatever you guys want.
Do we want this in the minutes?
No, we don't need to present that.
It's good information for the public.
Yeah, I agree.
Fifty years from now, they'll be looking at it.
Okay, so those can just be copied.
No, um. No, we, I have those via email.
Okay. So I'll just think. Do you need to plug them in?
If I send them as an email to you, it's easier for you to put those in here in the mail.
That's why I sent you.
It's not me again.
Alright, the.
I'm whacking stuff away.
Next up, I, I added this recently, the internet video broadcast discussion, so we have a great videographer here that videotapes our meetings and gets them onto DVDs, and gets them into the library, and gets it put, put on cable. I've been working with him to get copies of those DVDs and upload them to YouTube, so that people who maybe don't have cable, or, you know, don't go to the library or whatever, could just watch them from their house whenever they want to, on their own schedule. It works out okay, I find that it's not optimal, because a lot of times, we'll have a meeting, by the time it's prepared, and I get the DVD, and I get around to doing it, it may be two months, you know, between our meeting and the time I get it on YouTube. And, which is good, I mean, still getting there, I'm glad it's still getting there, but it's a long process. So I pulled Gary aside and had some discussions to see if he'd be willing or interested in, in doing that as part of his processing while he's doing it, and so that we could get them available for the public at a much earlier time. So like, when he's burning to the DVD, maybe he could upload it to YouTube, or whatever, some, some internet, it doesn't have to be YouTube, it could be wherever makes sense for him, and I'd be willing to work with him on that. We'd have to pay him to do that, because it's not something, you know, this is not cable-related stuff, most of his stuff, I believe, gets paid out of the cables, cable fund, so it'd be something we would have to pay him for. So I just wanted to throw that out there as an idea, I don't know that we have to do details or anything tonight, I just wanted to see if this is something the board wanted to pursue, and if so, I would ask that the board, ask the superintendent to get in touch with Gary at some point, and.
So this would be live?
No, it wouldn't be live, no, it'd still be delayed. If we do it live, that'd be great, I'd be all for that too, but.
Well, it could, these meetings could be live, but the towns, the selectmen and the cable committee, I don't think have approved the spending an extra amount of money would be to have live meetings.
Right, so anything like that would come out of our budget, right, so.
Nottingham does a live meeting.
Exactly, yeah. So anyway, it's, it's not good timing, I realize that, because it's a very busy time, so what, what I really think we should do is, is ask the superintendent to look at, to it at some future time, let's put it on our list, so we don't forget about it.
Yeah, can I put this in the parking lot?
Yes.
I'm just sitting there like, please, no, not now.
That's what I wanted to do, is put it in the parking lot, so that, so that once, once we get a, you know, a little extra breathing room, we can do that, does that make sense for people to do? I mean, is there interest in that, if there's not, we can just skip it.
So, how about?
I'd say February, because.
February's light.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
I remember one of your school board meetings in February, there was deliberative sessions, so we just have to do it the other one. So that, so I'm just gonna write here.
Mr. Grant, do you have any, anything you want to add to this, while you're here?
One of the things that might throw a monkey wrench into the work is that I would still be working for the town, and that would add hours to my, you know, what they pay me for, and I couldn't go over a certain amount.
Well, right.
Be a contracted surface.
I would have to do it as a contractor.
Right, right, yep.
In order to make it, and that would put it out of the hands of the town.
Right, that's what we're looking for, yep.
So it would be my, my, my company that I have, doing it as a, you know, contractor.
Yep, yep, that's, that'd be perfect, that's. Thank you.
I got it. Bless you.
I know what I'm doing.
Wait until February.
Then you're gonna remind me to file.
Yes, we will, I'm just gonna look at it at every meeting. Committee reports, has there been any committee meetings?
Nope.
Just safety.
They've had something new.
Oh, yes, new business, you had something small?
Yeah, just a, a question, we as, as school board members sign ethical things that we can't, I just wondered, if everybody that sits at, sits at this board during a non-public session, are they? We assume that they know they're not supposed to talk about it, but I mean, is there something we have, or should we have something, that everybody that sits at this table on a regular basis would?
Right.
I can't think of the words, but would.
Like a, like a nondisclosure agreement type thing, sure, and all that stuff, yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, I, that thought has crossed my mind before too, with the, I think we should, something we should be doing at the joint board as well.
Okay.
As this, but, I think, I don't know that we need it for.
Don't talk about anything, don't talk about anything.
Already, we're done. Bound by employment contracts.
And there's a. We're bound by.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
If you don't let me leave, I will talk.
Good, thanks, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Cause it makes sense.
Yep, it does make sense, it has come up a number of times, it's nothing related to you, because we have talked about it, it's just, we've never gotten our.
But we change a lot of times, different people change.
Our act together to do it.
That's why I just, one of my days of having nothing to do, and it popped into my brain, so.
So how about we add that?
Little pea brain doesn't have much else in there, so.
Dave, how about we add that as a real discussion item for our next agenda, and then we'll.
That's good, that's fine.
We actually have nondisclosure agreements, we can do it.
We could just do it, alright, whatever you guys, whatever you decide, sign.
Alright, what are we doing?
If you think it's needed, we.
What do you guys wanna do?
I don't have any objections to it.
Okay.
Name it for you too.
I'll sign one.
It's a nondisclosure agreement for non-public items.
Well, it's for.
All of it, but, yeah.
Okay.
Not just for non-public.
Just out of curiosity, that's.
Yeah, during a regular meeting, doesn't matter what you say.
We did, you talked, to talk about the admin. Okay, so we all set with that, Dave?
Yeah.
Alright, great, great, thank you.
The others. Committee reports.
Obviously, the Budget Committee met. Lots of good stuff from me on Saturday, I think any, anything that was relevant to us, I've already commented about, that I can think of this time.
Obviously, obviously.
Mr. Win, so Mr. Byrne is, I, I thank the, the members of the Budget Committee who didn't feel that we needed to be there Wednesday night, but Mr. Byrne's going to go anyway.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Byrne, I appreciate that.
You volunteered.
I think there's, I think, so just so you know.
It would be very good for us all to be there on Saturday, for sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, Mr. Rooney's talking about, I, I was told by Budget Committee Assistant Chair, I believe, that when we meet on the twelfth, that she, she didn't feel that, that Mr. Rooney would need to be there for the, the scope of business, so I relayed that message to him, he's saying, Mr. Byrne will come on the twelfth anyway, so.
I think you're, um. So on that, on that night, so there's a fact, there's a story there, so I'll tell you, because I won't be there, I have to, I have a family. My, my daughter's being inducted in the National Honor Society, that I need to be there. So, I mean, the National Honor Society, look at me. Figured out a way for Mr. O'Sullivan to go, and Mr. Byrne, so we had it covered, and I think there's an awful lot of considerations that's being extended to me that we've already worked out, so I thanked them for the gift, and said, but I'm not accepting it, so, Mr. Byrne will, will attend.
So, obviously, the.
And that's the end of my story.
Any other committees have meetings, I mean, we, we had that in Esper.
We didn't have a facilities, facilities meeting we haven't had in a while, we didn't have a.
No calendars or clubs?
We had a safety meeting, we're still work in progress. We're getting there to have a reunification tabletop exercise sometime next year.
You look like you want to.
I don't wanna talk, I just wanna pass out something informational, so I, I've missed this before, but these are your, this is just for your information. That's how we sort of back plan. So you have some assurances that were.
Actually, you got one for the secretary?
Yeah, it's right there.
No, she got it, yeah. She got two now.
No.
No, no, you keep yours. We should get a piece of everything we get.
On my chop lever?
Now that you mention it.
Alright, so on old business, we have budget discussion, I believe, we've budget discussed that to death. Unless somebody, unless there's some other issue that we, why we have it on here twice. Our parking lot, parking lot items, I know is budget, I'm not even gonna look at it, 'cause I know exactly what it is, no, not a parking lot, I'm sorry, that's the school board timeline. Parking lot items, we probably did some stuff on. Yeah, it was a discussion, it was already covered, and the school board timeline was just, is just to work on our budget, so. Parking lot items are on page one eighteen.
I modified your parking lot to move the calendar process to December.
Okay. So we are, sorry, we're adding the internet video discussion for February on here.
I'm sorry, we're on the timeline, February.
Yeah, I know, that's, it belongs on the parking lot, not the timeline, the timeline's like things that we do every year. These are.
Oh, sorry.
These are like unfinished projects, discussions and stuff. Let's just go with this, I'm sorry, did you have something you want to add?
Sort of unrelated, the committee discussion sparked it, so the calendar discussion for next year needs to get started. The teachers collective bargaining agreement indicates the board chooses the administrator who's on that committee, so that may be something for the board to think about either tonight or at next meeting.
And the administrator would be a superintendent, assistant superintendent, principal or assistant principal.
Does the superintendent have a, do you want us to decide that now, do you have some idea of who you want, who you would recommend to be put on there?
In the past, well, I was.
Who was on last year?
Me.
Superintendent had been on it before, the principal had been on it before. the principal had been on it before, over the years I was there.
And you're the representative for the calendar committee?
I mean, last year was Jocelyn, she got the job done.
I think the superintendent should decide what administrator is going to do it, I would imagine.
But that's not what the CBA says.
Okay, I don't care.
It says that we decide.
There's also one other person that has to be appointed by...
Community member?
Yeah. I don't know what the ruling was, was it appointed by the school board?
I think the board appoints a community member if I remember correctly.
We did not do it that way last year, no.
No, this is...
I mean, I know David, Mr. Ruth had asked me before about a community member and it made sense to me at that time and that Jocelyn knows the community members better than I. And that we...
I don't know what was in your, that's a contractual thing, right?
Right. I don't know.
It says, "The school calendar shall be determined by a committee of one school board member, one administrator chosen by the board, one parent selected randomly from volunteers, and two teachers chosen by the association."
Selected by who? The parent, doesn't say in the contract.
Says randomly.
Randomly.
By who?
I assume it's lottery.
Is it by whom?
Last year, it was me that chose and I chose very well with Amy Hannivan, so just saying, I have a proven track record of success.
That doesn't sound very random, though.
There were, there were no volunteers.
Okay, well, would Ryan Hannivan?
So will you be looking for volunteers?
Oh, yeah, sign him up for one more thing, I'm psyched.
I don't like that whole system.
I'd like to make a motion that we, the board nominates Ms. Young to serve as the administrator on the calendar committee.
I'll second that.
I just got way further discussion on that.
Do you feel comfortable with your workload that you can, not that you can handle it, but that you feel comfortable with that responsibility?
I think I can handle the calendar, yes. Thank you for asking.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I'm not saying I am.
Alright, so back to the parking lot?
Back to the parent.
No, the parent is randomly selected from the volunteer set and she will be looking for volunteers. She'll probably be in the Laker, I'm guessing.
I must have missed it, I didn't hear her say that she was going to do it for sure, right? There's no he existed.
I heard her say it. Whether she said it or not.
She said it.
I'm pretty sure, doesn't matter.
Remember proven track record?
School board newsletter?
So I need to like stop doing one thing so that I can do a newsletter. I need to like reorganize my life, I promise I will do one. I'm just doing too many.
Hey, this was on my list for a year and a half and I did zelch on it, so I totally get it, yeah.
So you don't have a hell of a...
You learn one more than Amy.
The bar is pretty low, you know?
What?
The bar is pretty low.
But I feel terrible because I don't want to like not do it, I just, I will.
If you need, like, if you need some help on things, let us know.
Or be like, hey, Amy, how's that newsletter coming? Sometimes I don't even remember until I'm like on my way here.
We have a newsletter?
Like I said, we did one, that's good.
I'm having the same challenge right now.
Yeah.
Getting ours done right now, I'm like...
It's just not a priority, unfortunately.
Like the last thing I'm thinking about.
Go with annually.
No, I want to do one four times a year, but I'm noticing that December's not a good idea.
December's rough.
Alright, so tractor, I think this might be time to take this off.
I'll leave the tractor off.
Put the sign on.
Means there's a discussion that has to be had for it?
Just for memory.
Alright, we're going to take the tractor off for next time, yes? You good with that?
I got it.
You got it? School safety, ongoing session, let's leave that on there for a while. I don't know that we need it on here because it's all dependent on the elections and stuff, but competency presentation in March, go on track for that. Strategic plan goal, we'll have to start reviewing our strategic planning goals again at some point, maybe once budget stuff is done. Calendar discussion, good. And blizzard bag, calendar. Okay, that's the calendar discussion with you?
That's the one you just had.
Or is that about the...
So this is about forming the committee and...
Yeah, and actually, that should probably be taken off of there.
Since we had that, we can get rid of it, right?
Put in, I don't know why it was on there anyway.
Was it for the, what do you call that?
Those kids run your ragged out there, Mr. Referee?
No, well, that too, but was it for that program you were looking into?
That's what I was wondering.
With the professional development days and the...
The flexible, the flexible calendar.
Was that what it was for?
About lining professional development days with...
If it was, I don't think it's appropriate for it to be here. I mean, we had it, you know, he's going to look into it and he's going to get back to us. Unless we want to put a deadline on it or something like that, I don't know that we need that.
I'll just take it.
So, alright, so we'll take that out too, the calendar discussion.
Yeah, and then I put calendar committee in December.
Yes, in the timeline.
Because that's every year.
Yes, yep. One calendar committee later.
Calendar discussion comes out...
If you email Ms. West...
So calendar discussion's coming out of parking lot items. And then he's adding calendar committee in our timeline or December.
So there's two strappers that came in today.
Have you been introduced to our timeline yet and stuff? Our timeline, our timeline is kind of the things that we need to do every year. You know, every year, like it's to remind us, hey, January's coming up.
I'm still thinking about that.
Future agenda items for...
We have two. You want to check? I have a question. We have a, the 10th, we have a joint board meeting, SAU, and you said something about having a...
We're going to post a quick meeting for after that to finalize our budgets.
Post, it'll be posted that we're going to have a meeting. At what time? And can we have it before the meeting or that's a...
No, Scott, because we've got a vote.
Can't be before the SAU budget. Can't be before because it's not approved by SAU before.
So we'll have to have it afterwards, so we could be there. Okay.
Till 2:00 in the morning.
Correct.
We'll be at the SAU?
Yeah? So, so if we put we're having a meeting, do we put the time we're having it?
I think you just have to post directly following.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, SAU joint board meeting, yep. And then we'll have only one agenda item, which is approval of the budget.
And warrants.
Three items. I'm not worried about the people, but, okay. We can put that one in a row.
You've got to be down before 10 because bull's outside 10.
What starts? What is it?
Bull.
They have DVD movies.
So do we need, what's our, what's our agenda for next?
I don't have one.
What's our agenda for December 20th? Do we have anything really?
We do. Wait, oh.
December 20th is our next...
It's annual Christmas party.
Yeah, we can all wear our Santa hats.
We can have a potluck.
We've been talking about that, we should.
It'll be fun.
I'll make the pizza.
You guys want to do, you guys want to do that? It'd be fun, we could do it.
It would be fun.
Have a little thing, but do we have, what business do we have other than approving minutes, right?
Well, you'll probably be having discussions about what happened at the budget committee, what if they disapprove our budget or cut $50,000 out of our budget?
That ain't going to happen. How are you going to address that?
Right, we can't do anything about it anyway. Right, if they do that, they do that, because we don't need...
I don't think that's...
Eventually we'll have to have it.
I mean, because it's their recommendation, so...
Oh, I understand, and they may not, or they may, but...
But I mean, looking at our, our December timeline, I mean, what has to be done? Budget preparation, it's prepared. We could start putting together the slides or something, we have some discussion on that. That might not be a bad idea. Or we could...
Well, you still, you still wouldn't have, I mean, yeah, you could start working on that, just remember you haven't had your public hearing yet at that point. So you don't have a...
Are you looking to cancel that meeting? I mean, I would think you just got to have it. It's easier to cancel one than just to all of a sudden say we got to have it.
Here's the thing, I, I think it's better to keep it open and cancel it than it is to cancel it and then have to re, so what if we have a true and opposite hire? What if we have some fundraising that needs to be approved? What if we, you know, there could be things that come up.
Alright, so let's leave our meeting as posted.
And then...
Our agenda will, right now, our agenda's pretty small and if anything comes up, we'll add it. If not, we'll make the call beforehand to see if we need it. And so keep your eye on your emails. You getting emails I send you?
No, I didn't get any.
Alright.
You? Did you get any from me?
From him?
The one you sent me. I got something.
He sent the NSPA contract stuff.
No, didn't get it. Unless it came in today, I mean, I looked...
Your Northwood address, Northwood School Board.
I think that's the mistake.
Because, well, you want to put me on that special school board email thing, I got to remember that?
Okay, we'll try to make sure we...
Special school board. We had to email one for the, when was it admitted, about 20 years ago?
We're going to get you some business cards, how about that? I think you can pass those out.
I'm the only one left that's got hotmail.
The only one in the whole country, I think.
So future meetings, right? We have December 10th, joint board meeting at the SAU, we will be hosting a quick Northwood school board meeting after that. Our next regular board meeting is December 20th, as we've determined, as we talked about, and then January 3rd after that. In addition to that, I want everybody to be aware of the public hearing at the budget committee for our budget, which we should probably be at as well.
It's in January, right?
January, yeah.
Yeah, what day?
The 30th of January. I won't be here for minutes because I have to chair a budget committee meeting, which is sort of like a cleanup meeting.
Okay.
Because they haven't been done yet. Your public hearing, the budget committee, the budget for the school is the 9th.
Wednesday.
I think it's the 10th. The 10th. The 9th is the town.
Thank you, Ryan, the town, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's 7:00.
Correct.
Now, is that, is that the budget committee?
That the budget committee is recommended budget.
Right, so I don't need to post?
No, budget committee posts that.
That was my question.
That's the public hearing.
That's the public hearing on ours before it goes to deliberative. Deliberative you have.
I did, it's a future date.
Is there any closing public comment? Oh, there is!
Mostly a germ.
Sharon Cora, 10 Lower Camp Road. So you may have remembered, or maybe you didn't, in October, the union reps requested to meet with the board informally and Amy West sent out an email on November 7th and tonight was the first meeting. So we were here, but you guys weren't at 5:45.
I don't have...
I apologize, I...
No, I know, so we would like to reschedule, so we're hoping maybe on January 3rd at 5:45 you guys would be available.
What about the 20th of December?
Well, we didn't figure you guys would want to do that, but, no, Beth says no.
So the informal was, was meeting with?
With Beth, Linda, and myself, with you guys.
With all five of us?
Or whoever, whichever representatives, I don't, it doesn't matter to us, but if it was two of you, five, I don't care, I mean...
I think it would have to be no more than two is my guess, right?
And that's fine.
No.
Whatever you guys want to do.
Or we have to post it as a public meeting.
Okay.